Welcome and hello, everybody. My name is Moises Augusto Rosario. I'm the Director of Treatment for EMAC, based here in Washington DC. And also, I lead the Program on Aging and HIV. And we're very, very happy to be here with you. We are, this is a program that was organized by DCC Far, EMAC, Rock for Aging, The Reunion Project, a bunch of organizations got together to make sure that everything that was happening during the International Workshop on Aging and Research on HIV, we were able to pass that information on to the community. It's very important that the community is involved, not only as an event, but during the whole conference. So, the conference is going to happen again next year here in DC. And we're really looking forward to start working with the organizers from the beginning. So, we have, you know, fair representation of people living with HIV over 50. And at the same time that we get to involve the local community in DC can participate and take advantage of the opportunity. So, with that, I'm going to pass it to my friend Larry, that he will be moderating the session.
Moderating. How can I moderate all these excellent and amazing voices up here? So, good afternoon. Happy Friday, everyone. I had to remember my name for a minute. I am Larry Bryant. I am the Senior Program Manager with The Reunion Project. The Reunion Project is a network of people living and aging with HIV around the country, working with networks and community members and partners around the country to provide sharing and safe spaces for, there I am, for people living with HIV to kind of connect, convene, connect, and share experiences, share stories. And with this, hopefully, be able to provide strategies and connections that help people who are both living and aging with HIV to live more productive lives, to live connected lives, to live self-directed lives. And one of the goals as well is working with the National Working Positive Coalition. One of Martha's hats that she'll talk about later is to kind of create these spaces. In fact, next week, we'll be in New Orleans for a town hall, Thriving with HIV, talking with local community members down there about these same issues. The goal of the meeting today is, as Moises talked about, is convening DC-area researchers, both community and clinical settings, with local HIV people living and aging with HIV in the area, and with our international viewing audiences, providing, having input and comments from people living with HIV and AIDS around the country and around the world, in fact, can help better shape the types of research, the types of trials, the types of resources that we, working together, can help provide, that help end this epidemic once and for all. As well, we want to be able to updating community on local and aging research, closing the communication gap between where the research comes from, where it's developed, and the community members, the people who benefit from its existence, from the communication, from its information. We need to do a better job of that, and this discussion will explore ways in how we can do that. We also want to hear from folks about their lived experience and what they view as the most pressing issues, both in care and mental health, whatever their personal and interpersonal needs are and priorities are. We want to make sure that that's a part of the total discussion, where we're talking about research, care, and support for people living and aging with HIV. So, I'm happy to be here. This is my first time being a part of this group, being a part of this conference. And I hope going forward, again, as Moises alluded, we want to make sure that this opens up a conversation portal, not just at the tecton, at the end of the conference, but hopefully, within the body of the conference, that where we all, both the researchers and people living and aging with HIV, can connect and maximize this interaction. So, I'm going to pass it to our panelists, and we'll start with Martha, who will introduce herself.
Sure. Thank you. So, my name is Martha Sichane Cameron. I see some familiar faces in the room, but for those that don't know me, I am originally from a country called Zambia, Africa, in Africa, which is where I was diagnosed in 2003. So, this year is my 20th anniversary in terms of serum conversion, but I also turned 49 on Monday. So, I'm calling myself a freshman senior. My understanding of that is just based on all the scary things we've heard over the past two days and everything else that I've heard. Having joined the MaxWise study recently is that my biological age is probably much older than 49, based on the things that are going on in our bodies. I wear multiple hats in the community. I have a huge passion for women and children. I myself have had two children since I have been HIV-positive. They are 12 and 14, and my son recently had a homecoming date, which I am still, you know, trying to wrap my mind around, my 14-year-old, that is. I've worked in DC for one of the leading women's organizations, at the regional level, for the International Community of Women Living with HIV. And as Larry mentioned, I'm also working with the National Working Positive Coalition, the People Living with HIV Caucus. I'll quiz you afterwards, so just make sure you keep a running list. But I think the long and short of that is that I'm very passionate about my community and very passionate about the lived experience that we have. And I've had an epiphany in this, you know, meeting and the things that we've heard over the past few days, and that is, I really feel like there is no closing of the loop. We have been working so hard in the DCC Far, which I've been a member of for the past 12 years, to ensure that the community is connected to the research, that we're informing the research, and that our researchers are looping back to us. But just based on my personal experience, for example, I've realized that there is something missing in the communication loop. Clearly, from the presentations that we've heard over the past few days, all the researchers knew that I was going to have heart problems, you know, to put it simply, right? Cardiovascular disease and complications, high blood pressure, all the things that have been said here. In fact, I took a screenshot of one of the slides yesterday, just in preparation for this meeting, which basically said, you know, in conclusion, people living with HIV are at greater risk for multiple diseases than people living with HIV. Earlier today, I was also listening online, and it said, women are twice as likely to have a stroke than men. And then, if you're non-Hispanic, that adds on to the complication. So, we've known all this, and yet, my doctor has never talked to me about the complications that I would face as a person living with HIV in any of my medical appointments. In fact, I was sharing earlier that my insurance denied me getting a shingles vaccine three weeks ago, because I was not of the age yet to get a shingles vaccine, and that had to be overridden. And it's the same thing with a colonoscopy that I'm about to get in a couple of weeks. Another profound slide that I heard, was that this morning, I think, when they were talking about mental health and isolation? I don't know if that was today or yesterday. And it basically showed two graphs, and it showed that the, basically, what those two slides, I even put in the chat, it said it wasn't a question. I said, "How profound." How, you know, people with untreated mental health disorders were as likely to die as if they had not been on ART. He simply put, "Mental health can kill people, and isolation, just like they were not on ART treatment." So, here we are, we're focused on biomedical medication and advances, and yet, we know our community, especially those aging with HIV, have such high mental health issues. When I worked in DC and I worked with the women living with HIV, more, over 90% of our clients had mental health issues. How is this not translating into services? How is this not translating into policies for us, as people living with HIV, where there needs to be coordination of geriatric care before we're ever seniors? We've had the two most recent people that died in our community, one of them died of breast cancer, at less than 40 years old. And yet, we cannot get mammograms and screenings and things like that. So, how has this not changed the face of HIV if the researchers have had these, these reports that we've been getting have been following people over decades? And yet, it cannot be used, unless it's published. And then, we come to these meetings as researchers and pat ourselves on the backs for the great work that this person and that person is doing. And yet, our community, we are still dying of mental health, of isolation, of heart disease, of diabetes. Johns Hopkins did a study using Ozempic, and I think it was talked about this morning or yesterday, about how that reduces fat around the liver, right? Or fat, and then, there was also another thing on muscles. I think it was the first presentation this morning on how we have all this muscle loss in our bodies. And I was laughing later on when somebody was talking about us doing high-intensity exercises. Like, I wish I'd been in the room, because I'd have loved to look at people who, here we are talking about aging, muscle dystrophy, if I can call it that, heart disease, and yet, we're thinking that a solution is for people aging with HIV to be doing high-intensity exercises? You know, like, to, no, I'm being real, you know, like, to me, there is a disconnect here, that we can spend so much money on research, that takes decades, and that cannot impact our medical care in any way, our policies. By now, the only presentation that I heard that had anything to do with coordination of care was actually the one in Zimbabwe. In the US, we are not coordinating care, geriatric care, we're not using it to influence how, Ryan White should have changed 20 years ago to stop, you know, pushing pills down our throats and adding mental health and work to do with our heart disease and diabetes and stopping our liver from looking like we're all alcoholics. And yet, all we're doing is taking our medications as we're supposed to every day. It is scary, as a person living with HIV, to be on what I call the dark side, you know, to be in the research world and know that all this information is being collected from our bodies, being used for publications, and it's not turning into services that can keep people alive for a little bit longer. And so, I have been thinking to myself, what do we need? We need an ACT UP. You know, those that were involved in ACT UP were fighting for medications that were still being researched before they could be given to people who were dying, dying of HIV in those early days, and for a whole host of other reasons. I honestly think we need to act up in research and start demanding that some of these publications and findings, even though some of them might be preliminary after 10 years or 20 years, that they start translating into policy change and healthcare services that can actually keep people alive. Because what is killing us is not HIV anymore, right? It's not HIV. It's the fact that we're getting diabetes and heart disease, and we're dying of mental health issues and isolation, that you all seem to have an answer to, but it's hidden in a, if I wasn't a person living with HIV, I'd have had to pay $500 to come to this So, it's, there's something missing. There's still a communication loop missing, that all the researchers have left when there was a community panel, where we could have given feedback about what we were hearing. That sometimes, we sit in these meetings, and we don't understand half of the things that are being said. And I want to lead a revolution. I don't want to die of a stroke before I'm due, just because I have inflammation or whatever it is that researchers have known about for 10 years, because it's in their journals, but my doctor isn't even talking to me about it, and the policy hasn't shifted to show that I can get care that will keep me alive a little bit longer for my children. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Martha, for that. I wanted, just wanted to add, like, one of the things also killing us and people living and aging with HIV is also apathy. Just, it's coming on, "Oh, we got a pill for that. Don't worry about it. You're good. Go do some yoga," that kind of thing. So, thank you for sharing that.
Do some high-intensity yoga.
High-intensity yoga. And I also neglected to say that, yes, I am living with HIV, going into my 38th year of living with HIV. As a heterosexual black man, I would also like to see more representation of us in this room, and on panels, and in discussions as well. But our next speaker, I pass it to...
Researcher.
Am I passing? Yes. Dr. Marjorie C. Gondra-Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you.
I almost wish that I presented something different, simply because I hear you, and actually, it's important for researchers to hear the passion, right? And research is slow by its nature, and sometimes, recommendation, people are very careful before they make recommendations, because it gets propagated in many different settings, and so, you need to have the facts in order to support that. When you're talking about people know what's happening, it reminded me of a research project, actually, George Kerr is on that project that we did, where we actually did a study to investigate how to implement brain health care into the HIV care continuum. I'm not talking about that today, but it was kind of surprising to me how many providers in the Washington DC area were not familiar with the signs or what to do regarding mental health. People are really siloed, and so, your infectious disease person is not talking, like, they don't want to know about psychology or psychiatry, your, you know, your geriatric care, they're not privy to, like, the accelerated aging that you may be experiencing. And so, when you say that communication is a key factor, it really and truly is quite important. And we saw that firsthand, because the idea was to go into these centers and say, "Well, how can we get you to incorporate mental health care as part of what you do?" You know? And the conversations were rich, and yes, we do need to publish. But I'm here, and I'm happy to be here, because I get to share with you the fact that, number one, we did that. Number two, we need to get it out, so that people know what the findings are, even if it's something, not that people don't know that there were mental health problems, so those with HIV know, those who are studying that know, but the broader community doesn't know. And the broader community goes beyond people living with HIV, it's people caring for HIV patients, and so, that certainly needs to get out there. So, I'm supposed to have 10 minutes to talk about the, this HIV aging and the brain. I don't know what people know. This is my first time presenting in this type, in this type of forum, so bear with me.
Tell us what we need.
Okay. Bear with me. I, this is, there's no, it doesn't work? If I point it, oh, it shows up. Okay. Yeah, so...
It doesn't work for you, does it?
No. I just like to point to things, but I guess people can read along. I'll just go straight to the fourth bullet point, which is talking about people worldwide are over 50 years, and greater than, in the US, greater than 50% of people living with HIV are older than 50 years. And so, we're shifting focus from the medical, from the medical care to, of the infectious disease, to age-related comorbidities. And cognitive impairment kind of appears in conjunction with aging. And so, unless you're looking at it from a younger person who may have accelerated cognitive impairment, it's hard sometimes to separate that from normal aging. And people are trying to tease apart the features of cognitive impairment that's different from normal aging. And so, the severe dementia is gone, thank goodness, for antiretroviral therapy. But there is a form of hand that's called mild cognitive disorder or asymptomatic cognitive disorder. And this is where people are forgetful, or, you know, they can't handle some things, confusion, some, it's asymptomatic, because they don't realize that there's something that's wrong, but people around them can see that there's some kind of a disconnect or that they're reacting to life in a different way. And so, so, this actually is really quite important, because 30 to 60% of people living with HIV could have asymptomatic neurocognitive impairment or mild neurocognitive disorder. Okay? And so, we're looking at the prevalence and the incidence of it, and we need to address the aging population. And it is new, actually. It sounds like people should know, but it is new relatively, within the past few years that you're starting, people are starting to present with these symptoms far earlier than they ought to. So, we're going away from, okay, we have the, we have the drugs to control the disease, but the internal, the impact is changing. Okay? And so, I'm going to go very quickly through this. You know, importantly, the neuropsychiatric aspects are really important, right? And those are modified, as I said before, by age-related cognitive impairment. When you have HIV infection, it leads to accelerated cognitive aging, as I said before, and it changes based on the duration of time with HIV. And so, how did I come to this? I really study addiction. I'm not an HIV researcher, per se. And I became a scientist with the DC Center for AIDS Research, and through that, I combined my experience dealing with substance use disorder, both preclinical and with human subjects, to apply it to HIV, because there is a flat affect in people with HIV. There is depression, there is a whole bunch of neuropsychiatric orders that are correlated with substance use disorder as well. Okay? So, there is that. And importantly, the literature, actually, you can go and see that HIV actually enters the brain very early on during infection. And long after treatment with antiretroviral therapy, that, the HIV continues to divide in the brain. It remains there after it's undetectable in the blood. Okay? And so, whatever the cognitive impact is, even in the presence of antiretroviral therapy, it's continuing to have impact on brain centers that are involved with things like reward, okay, and emotions, and dealing with the different aspect of our lives. And people who have both HIV and have substance use disorder have a conversion of the targets. Not many people are doing that. Our labs is one of the only ones, really, that are truly looking, there are just a handful of labs that are truly looking at the impact of both HIV and substance use disorder. It's only recently that NIH has invested the money to say, "Hey, we need to look at the intersection of this." So, anything we publish about HIV and the reward system will be relevant to know how HIV impacts that system, because you have a convergence of different types of issues, cognition, behavior, and motor. So, there is the memory loss, there is difficulty concentrating, there is slowing, you know, mental slowing. And some people may experience, like, an unsteady gait, right, and poor coordination. Others, in terms of neuropsychiatric behavior, could have depression, or anxiety, or apathy, or loneliness. You know, we've, we're talking, you know, people don't talk about loneliness, even outside of HIV. There are neural correlates of loneliness that impact this brain reward that we're talking about. Okay? And so, yeah, attention and concentration has been an issue that's been brought up. I'm not going to go through this. It's showing the different parts of the brain and how they interact with each other. But let's say that there's a, sorry, let's say that there's a convergence, oh, why is it, oh, I keep going forward. Let's say that there's a convergence of places in the brain that interact with memory, right? The hippocampus is important, the amygdala deals with emotion and neuroendocrine function, right? Like, well, a lot of different aspects, but mostly, we're talking about anger and fear and even happiness a little bit, and they all converge onto the nucleus accumbens. Okay? And so, our goal is to study this nucleus accumbens, amygdala, prefrontal cortex, and hippocampal area. Those are, you know, so when you're, when you're, you know, the prefrontal area is for planning, amygdala is for emotion, hippocampus is for learning, and nucleus accumbens, that's where all the systems converge, and it is a dopamine processing area that contributes to motivation, right, and motor systems. And so, we did a study. I won't go to how we did it, but let's just say that, at the end of the day, when we compare control individual or non-HIV controls with HIV without substance use disorder, so we had to separate them. For a long time, we couldn't understand the data, because we were just putting everybody with HIV together with everybody who doesn't have it. But substance use disorder has an impact, and so, you know, we had to develop four groups, where we study controls HIV-only with no substance use disorder, substance use disorder only, and then, a group with both HIV and substance use disorder. So, here, I'm only showing you the whole brain graph display of somebody with control and HIV. And each of those dots are, you know, major areas of the brain, and in terms of their connectivity. And you can see that the clusters are much smaller in terms of connectivity in the brain with the HIV. The rest of these are just showing you the difference between the different regions and how they interact with one another, and different visualization of that same data. Okay? So, we talked about the nucleus accumbens. If you leave with nothing else here, I want you to know the nucleus accumbens. It's the neural interface between motivation and action. So, it controls both motivational processes and motor processes, right? So, the, that area of the brain, for example, in terms of the, it's part of a bigger area called the basal ganglia, and those are the areas that are... area called the basal ganglia, and those are the, the areas that are impacted in things like Parkinson's disease and Huntington's disease. So if you have a problem with the striatum, the, the area where the nucleus accumbens is, you're going to have a problem with motivation. And of course, that leads to drugs of abuse because the motivation to seek drugs also is impacted, okay? So it plays a key role in feeding sexual behavior, reward behaviors, stress-related, and self, and drug self-administration behaviors, okay? More and more, oh, did I overdo it?
No, no, you're good.
Okay. More and more, we're starting to look at other functions and other implications beyond the reward and the neuroendocrine function, so look at bipolar disorders, obsessive-compulsive disorders, psychiatric disorders, you know, brain disorders like Alzheimer's disease. So, so there's a combination of neurodegeneration, where you're losing neural function, and neuropsychiatric. Those are two different types of modalities. And so if you damage the nucleus accumbens, what happens, okay? You're less motivated, you're less engaged, you have less drive to achieve your goals in the real world, okay? And so I'll only show you this here, although I have other slides, but, you know, I'll show you. This is a magnetic resonance imaging where you study blood flow at specific regions in the brain, and you look at how well-connected one area of the brain is to another. So in this case, we took the anchor as the nucleus accumbens, and we're saying, how does it connect to other parts of the brain? And what this is showing is that there's more connectivity in the control nucleus accumbens, and you can see it's practically, I mean, look at the HIV brain, right? That there is absence of connectivity, complete absence of connectivity compared to the control brain. So up here is left and right, so you don't need to worry about it, just look at these top two. I think they tell the story. And so we looked at several other brain regions, including all those areas that we just talked about, the hippocampus, the amygdala, and found similar types of output. And so what do we do about that, right? What do we do about that? Because the state of HIV in the brain, so nobody knows, I really do need to get this out, because people don't know how HIV impacts reward, really, right? And then there's the social determinants of health, right, and other comorbidities that are impacting how you, you know, like your motivation to do things. If you're sick, you're less likely to participate in any number of activities. And so, you know, the lab is looking at genes and how that interacts with environment. We have to keep that in mind as we're talking about all of the inputs that influence our behavior and motivation to do things or to get out of bed. Not to mention this toxic stress, you know, in DC. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on in people's lives, okay? Okay. And so what we want to do is to find ways to kind of activate those, those regions and to restore activity and connectivity back into those regions, right? So we're exploring several natural methods, you know, how do we increase dopamine without more, like, typical drugs? But, but find ways to amplify the reward in the brain so that people can live better lives. Living longer is okay, as long as your quality of life is right up there, and often it is not, okay? So, so here, we talk, oh, I have the thing with loneliness in there. So we talk about this low dopam, dopamine, right? We talk about dopamine as the thing that drives us, that gives us pleasure in life. And so the state of hypo, hypo dopaminergia is low dopamine, right? That means that the dopamine that's in the nucleus accumbens can't do its job, or the nucleus accumbens can't receive it, or the different systems along the pathways didn't do the job right. And so my son drew this for me. It's an octopus, and, and, and it's just showing how you have this head called, you know, we can call it all-reward deficiency as a result of a low dopaminergic state. And what causes that, it, it could be early life stress, could be substance use disorder, HIV, depression, PTSD, all of these different things, and they all impinge to, to impart this idea of loneliness, right, which is not codified yet. People are just starting to think about that as a biological measure. So, so we have to think about that toxic stress because it does contribute to the depression, to the anxiety, to eating disorders, gambling, and sex addictions. All of these stressors are actually impinging onto that low dopaminergic state. So our goal is to increase dopamine at the end, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody, especially the DCC Far for, for bringing me into thinking about HIV and ways that we can ameliorate the process.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much, doctor. I love the, the slide of social determinants of health. I like to think of it as, I think, black people, a lot of people, think of it as more like social determinants of life, what keeps us alive, right? Okay, so now I'm gonna pass it to Wallace Corbett.
Yes. My name is Wallace Corbett. I work on, I live in DC. I've been positive since the early eighties. I work in the Department of Radiology at GW Hospital for twenty-seven years. I've been engaged and involved in the community from the beginning. I was part of the first gazebo test for HIV. If you don't know how it worked, back then, in the early eighties, you went down a, an alley to a door that was marked with an X, and you were John Doe. And you did not know whether you got a gazebo or you actually got a treatment, but you knew, and I know today that I'm glad I'm still alive. Amen? So I've been through the whole process from the beginning. I work at GW. I'm a part of DCC Far. I was a part of NAPWA. I don't know if you know that one. I was a part of NAPWA on their board back in the day. I lead or are part of a project called Our Heroes Exhibit. This is it. Our Heroes Exhibit is the largest HIV exhibit covering the history of AIDS in the District of Columbia through black and white photography. There's over five hundred pieces of black and white photography of people, places, and things and events of the District of Columbia's history. I kept the exhibit, and now it's owned and covered by the Martin Luther King Library. So if you wanna have a go and see the history of, of HIV, it's actually in their library as part of the largest exhibit that they have. Be proud of that for the district. Because one thing I learned about hearing from this, this conference is our journey sometimes is forgotten. And when you forget a journey, you can't remember what mistakes you made, and you make them again. So I'm on the Q and A part, and so I'm here to listen to your questions and then provide experts to give the answers. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. I've done this so well. So my first question, any questions? Please raise your hand. There's a hand.
I'm a black man living with HIV for thirty-five years in Cincinnati, Ohio. Some of the things that I hear about the difficulties in communicating with your doctor, I'm not experiencing. I, I go to an academic medical center, and I guess I ought to thank my lucky stars because what I'm hearing is that I, that we, we hear about all kinds of stuff. I was talking to the gentleman next to me, just, I, my doctor answers me in fifteen minutes if I send her an email. So it, it, but what startles me is the wide disparity between how people are still, the, the care people are still getting. And that's what really stuck out to me at the conference. But I'm grateful to the conference because they gave me a full ride up here because they wanted community here, and I feel they appreciated my voice. But again, I just wanted to, to say that there's a wide variation between the care some people get and the care others are getting. And I just wonder why that is this late in the day.
Anyone on the panel would like to answer that?
Martha.
Oh, yeah, I'm ready. Isn't it the story of America, though, right? They have and they have not.
Exactly.
When I came from Africa and started working in DC, I was shocked because as far as I'd been told, the streets of America were painted with gold. And I was very surprised to see what I saw in southeast DC, poorer than some people that I'd ever seen. I'd also never seen such a huge concentration of substance use. I just never expected to see such poverty. When, 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 when you were talking about stressors, my husband also always used to call me when I was on my way to work to tell me whether there had been a shooting or something that happened around the metro stations that I was going to go to. And I don't need to tell you that structural racism and oppression in this country is real, and it affects mostly the people that look like us. And so whereas a few of us have managed to come out on the other side, and I remember, actually, it was my boss at the Women's Collective that said to me one day, when I said, well, you know, if I can come here as an immigrant, and I did face challenges and make it, then other people can too. And she said, not until you understand some of the structural oppression that these people face. Walk in the day of people in Martin Luther King and Anacostia, and then you'll understand that it's just not a matter of coming out of it and going on to the other side. This is years and years and years of oppression that stops people. You talk about depletion of, of dopamine, where there sometimes is no motivation, or there's generational poverty and being on systems that want to keep you oppressed and poor. It's not that people don't want to get out of poverty. It's just that when they are, I've had to drop my Middle African name in order for me to get interviews, okay? It's, it's about you making it in a society where I'm afraid to raise black boys in northern Virginia. You've gotta understand that structural oppression is very real in this country, and is very real in certain parts of this country, like southeast DC, like the South, where people, it's, it's just not that they don't wanna make it, it's just that they can't even have access to the good healthcare. And then when they do have that healthcare, when I was having my second child here in America, I was told I had no business having children as an HIV-positive woman on Medicaid, okay? And so there is bias, there is stigma, there is violence towards people that are gender non-conforming. It's very real, and as those of us that are privileged and have a voice need to continue representing those that don't have the same experiences, that's because they are few and far between.
Thank you, Martha. Very, that's great. I wanted to make a point and, and ask about...
I just wanted to add one more thing.
Yeah, 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 please.
You know, we, we do a lot of studies, at least Mind Lab does, because I'm interested in these disparities. And, you know, if, if you're, if you live east of the Anacostia, you might as well be in some rural, you know, off, yeah, off-the-grid kind of place because access is really lacking for multiple reasons, right? Basic access is lacking. And so, and so what is that? What is going on in DC? DC is at the top of the list for so many things, like the highest rate of HIV in the country. Sometimes it's worse than some third-world countries, you know, like the rate here. What's going on in, in DC? Substance use disorder, you know, when opioid deaths were skyrocketing, it really happened in Ward Seven and Eight, you know? And other places, it actually decreased. I published a paper last year about this, where I just went and analyzed different cities and what's happening with black people, black men especially, because it is an older demographic that we're looking at also in DC. And so what is going on structurally in this city with all the money that's being thrown around day in and day out, that we can't figure out a way to give people access, to give people jobs, you know, to give them a reason for living, not just necessarily a handout, but, you know, like, create jobs and train people to, 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 to be a, a part of society, to create, you know, transportation. Transportation is key. And so I just wanted to say that because oftentimes I argue with the NIH and other entities that all the money that's being thrown to rural areas also need to come to city areas, like our city areas, because those people, if you have a, if you have a couple of kids and you need to make an appointment, it might as well have been miles and miles away. It's absolutely difficult.
Just kind of a question, but also a, a point about, when we talked about substance use, and I think about the HIV community and, and the most, the clothes that I have more, the MSN, gay men that have sex with men, community, it's, it's, the, the, the story about drug abuse is a little different, sometimes in the sense that, like, I have, you know, when you're young and you go to the potties and that's, that kind of like first experience for a lot of gay men about using, like, like ecstasy, or ketamine, or crystal meth, and, but like, what we've seen with my, the community of people fifty and over, right? We have a group of people, cohort of people, that went through the worst of the HIV epidemic. They lost a lot of their friends, they, you know, they have to come through the other side and with many issues of mental health, a trauma, and, and when a lot of them stopped working, went on disability, you know, like, they were kind of waiting, and now with the medication, everything was turned around, but they have lost already ten years of building a career. They were on Medicaid for those ten years and had no idea how to come back to work. So a lot of these, this, in this population then faced isolation, like you mentioned, depression, but also a high level of use of crystal meth. Yeah, and that is something that I, when I, when we talk about it, I don't know if it's the stigma within the stigma, like, people in, have a hard time talking about crystal meth use, but it's very insidious, and it's, it's very much in the communities, and not just white MSM, like, black MSM, Latino MSM, you see it, but because it's not, people don't talk about it, it doesn't get addressed. So our issues get lost into the, I mean, we see opioid, it's, you know, it's a problem, but they get lost into that, you know, general perception of opioid use. And we are the ones also aging, we're the first cohort. So, so it would be interesting to see how this group fifty-plus, you know, get, is part of that research that you're doing, which it sounds so great and important and exciting. We need to hear more about how, how our cohort is represented in this research and how our answers get addressed.
I, I can, I can say something in the future, in a future time. So right now, what we're doing is getting the voices included. So when we have focus groups, for example, we make a point to have trans, like, all the different groups represented so that we can hear the voices. Because trans women actually have, and, and if you're a trans woman and black, you're, you're really ostracized. And so, and so we bring those people to the table so that we can hear the voices, what the issues are for them, and be able to relay that information.
Can I add to that? So, and one of the things that I've also noticed in the research is that sometimes it doesn't pull out the trans folks, right? So they're recorded as, you know, men assigned at birth, a male assigned at birth, whatever, gender assigned at birth, and that's how it's recorded. And I feel like that actually misses out as an extra level of the stigma and stresses for, for people that are gender non-conforming. It, it, it misses out that just extra level of violence, for example, that is faced by the trans community. It misses out that just extra level of violence, for example, that is faced by the trans community as well as stigma that is generally faced by the LGBT community. And that was the other thing that really shocked me coming into this country. And I know that the root of it and part of why HIV stigma is perpetuated is because of religious and conservative views in this country. And so where I came from, when we were diagnosed in Africa and when we were orphans, I was also orphaned, Zambia was the cradle of the orphan crisis. We were so stigmatized, and that stigma was very real. We were considered damned by the religious community, essentially, you know? For those people that came, even some religious folks that came to help us felt like we were the lowest and lowest of people as orphans and people living with HIV. And then I come here and it's the same attitudes towards the LGBT community. So it's really interesting. But what makes me so sad is I have seen young trans or lesbian or LGBT kids literally die, not because of the virus, but because of the stigma and suicidal thoughts and mental depression that they face because of the rejection that has happened to them, either through their family or religious communities. And usually that's a, in our black communities, that's a combination of both. So, you know, those are little things that are just not accounted for in the research, that the phobias associated with HIV are real. And if we cannot get rid of them or face those head-on, we can be talking about mental health and it killing people and not really getting to the root cause of some of the, of some of the issues.
All right, Larry, do you have one more question online?
Thank you. I wanted just to, just note as we're talking about aging, and Martha alluded to it. First of all, Dr. Lewis, thank you, I'm in love with you. And I'm gonna follow up with you, I'm a stalker, Linda H. Scruggs. But I want to go back to what Martha...
Community mama as well.
I want to go back to what Martha was noting. And I want to put it on record that I'm really disappointed that the researchers didn't stay for this, right? I know there are a few in the room, and I really thank you for that. There's a few. I said, I want to thank you for the ones that are here, but there are more that could, it was an agenda. There are so many other diseases that we're dying from and that research has to really ante up on during the research to correlate HIV. And again, you know, unintentional death injuries is leading injuries of HIV in people living with HIV. Heart disease, cancer, homicide, right? So why are people living with HIV that are aging? No one's looking at that. That's not on the six o'clock news. But CDC is capturing suicide is happening in our, that is enough that is capturing on their radar in that space. We, no, unintentional overdose, and again, not just in opiate use, right? Is that polypharm, or what is that? There are some other places that we have to turn our lens to when we're looking at data, we're looking at research. But again, as Martha said earlier, when we're looking at cancers, particularly this week, they talked about cancers in women not related with HIV that are happening in their 30s and 40s. Because we know that HIV acceleration creates other diseases, who's on watch looking at those diseases? Again, this week, there was a lot of research data on aging, but it wasn't HIV. And someone made a comment earlier that it's all aging. I really don't care about the all aging at an HIV and aging conference, right? I need more HIV and aging intersection data. You know, that's where we have to, again, it's, everybody's aging, but we have to have an intent that we're looking at how HIV, very specifically, it's impact, how this impacts the aging process, you know? So I thank you for your cognitive, I mean, we know at the hand, I'm gonna talk to you about that. We see that, we, there's a lot of data, but what is the treatment? You know, is there things we can be doing? How does that happen in the clinic, you know? What should I be telling, what should we be telling people? What is the questions we can be giving to our providers to help us at clinic? We see it. Some of us see it in our houses, we see it amongst our friends, but we don't have the clinic answer to help our peers. Many of us see our peers who are aging in this challenged space. We know what it's called because we've been sitting in this room, but we don't know how to help them. We don't have the implementation from the research science.
So thank you for that. So when we did our work in terms of implementation, science, how to get brain health care into HIV care, it was amazing, you know, in that... Oh, sorry. We're okay? Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, so I just want to say that, so, you know, that's a key issue, right? Like, people are bringing up the fact that, the fact that cognitive care is needed. And we need, people need funding, honestly, to be able to do a little bit more and concentrate more on HIV and aging, so.
Thank you for that, so...
At four minutes.
So not just funding, but more time, too.
But more time. Because, and I just wanted to make a quick comment, that last year, we lost 462 people to the opiate overdose crisis. It's an epidemic here. So we need to do more, and we're not going to be able to end HIV until we address that issue. Because right now, we're really not collecting the data for the LGBTQIA community. And so until we start collecting the data and get research around that, we're not going to be able to end HIV. So you want to go to the next slide? I just want to, real quick, I am the Chair of the DCCFOR Community Partnership Council. I have that great honor. I took over from my mentor, my de, Marcia Ellis. And I do this work. And when I took over, she said, "George, redesign your shoes." So that's what we're doing. This is going to be a continual conversation, this is not the end. I look for the CFOR, the CPC, to take this to the next level. And so we can go to the next slide, my final slide. I am also the National Chair for the National CFOR Cap Coalition. I'm already talking to the organizers about how to incorporate the N3C into this conversation and having more of a community voice. And so I will just say, we really do appreciate you for coming. This whole thing was put together in just over two weeks. We literally, last minute, come together to pull this together. So thank you to everyone in the room for coming. Thank you for everyone that's online. And we will be at next year's conference, and we'll have more of a voice there. So, thank you.
Thank you again?
Goodbye, goodbye, and come back next year.